No, I gotta switch the.
We are good. We got a thumbs up.
Alrighty, and welcome to the April 11th meeting of the Stowe Select Board. In the room tonight, I have Ellen Sturgis, Hector Kstansis, and myself. Small but mighty board this evening. And we have some special guests I will recognize in a few minutes. At this time, I'm going to open the floor up for public comment. I will remind people that public comment should be limited to things that are not on the agenda this evening. Also, I would ask people to keep public comment to two minutes. If there's anyone that would like to speak about something not on the agenda. Also, I'm going to ask you to just make sure that you state your name and your address for the record. Dorothy?
Hi, my name is Dorothy Granite, and my address is 11 White Pond Road. I would like to ask the Select Board if they would revisit the advice of having a either a subcommittee or working group involved with the water for the Lower Village. It was recommended and wasn't turned, but I thought it wouldn't be a big problem while it was just in the study stage, but it's concerning to me that the business property that the town is not supporting the Sewing Board of Appeals findings in court is also slated on maps to have the water protection wellhead on most of their property. It gives them sort of control of the water, so and that's a change from what was voted on when that was put in the meetings in the past when that conservation land was decided that it could be used for water. So it's just concerning, I just, it would be a little bit more public in decision making.
Okay, thank you, Dorothy. Mark?
Yes, Mark Forbes, 39 Adams Drive in 9 White Pond Road in Stowe. I just want to voice my opinion against the article about the Lower Village going on the agenda to, you know, for the new, for the May Town Meeting. Nobody was prepared. I've mentioned this before to the board. I think the board could stop it if they chose to. This justice is not prepared. I believe that you should be revisiting it. I don't understand why the rush of the boards, both boards, the Planning Board and the Select Board, are trying to get this pushed through so quickly. I know there have been a lot of talks about it over the years, but Linehan didn't know anything about it. The last meeting with Linehan involved, you know, they said, well, how come the board never reached out to us? He is someone that's holding a third of the property, maybe even half of the property in the Lower Village, and yet there was no communication with them. I believe this is rushed, and I believe you should stop this. Anyway, that's all I have to say, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public comment this evening? Nope. Any board member comments? Hector?
First, I'd like to recognize that April is National Arab American Heritage Month. And on top of that, many people just recently celebrated Easter, but also recognize that this coming Sunday is the Eastern Orthodox Easter. And also, the, those of the Jewish faith that are celebrating Passover and those of the Islamic faith that are celebrating Ramadan. I also have a concern, I've been on the board now for eight months, and early on, I had asked about the liaison positions, and I was told that that had changed, and I thought that it was going to be on the agenda at some point for us to discuss and see what was going on. So I'd like to find out, when can we expect that to be on the agenda, or how do we get it on the agenda?
Sure, I can, what do you want to do?
I'd love to have it on the agenda for us to discuss having liaisons, and who's liaison to what, and what's going on with the program. You know, that's been a practice of this board for decades, and I was a little surprised that it changed.
But we discontinued it.
We discontinued it.
Two years ago.
So this was something the board decided? I'd love to rediscover it and revisit it.
Sure, absolutely. We can put that on an agenda.
And also, per conversations that we had about the implied policy that employees should not be speaking to board members, I was wondering whether that was going to be on the agenda, or when we can put that on the agenda.
Hector, if that's something that you want to discuss, we certainly can put it on an agenda. Yeah, let's, let's put it on a future agenda.
That'd be great. And the last thing was the DEI policies. I know that we had that a few agendas ago. There were some updates made, so I was hoping we'd see those.
It's on May 9th, because we have to get through town meeting business, and we have the folks that reached out to us for the antisemitism policy scheduled for May 9th.
Great. That's all I had.
All right, fantastic. Denise?
Yes, just a few things this evening. As of April 6th, we're back down to having less than five cases of COVID in town with a 4.94% positivity rate. I would expect these numbers will stop coming out shortly as the state of emergency formally ends in early May, but until then, I will continue to give them. We talked last week, you voted to overspend the snow and ice budget. Just so you know, we are at $54,986 overspend, so I don't expect any additional need to use that account, but that's what we stand to today. The Finance Committee will be holding their public hearing on the Warren Articles next Tuesday, the 18th, at 7:00 on Zoom. And we are looking for applicants for temporary summer positions for our camp director, our waterfront director, lifeguard, camp counselor positions. The camp director and waterfront director must be 21+, but all other positions are excellent for students interested in working with children, majoring in education, nursing, social work, et cetera. If folks are interested, please visit our website for more information. You can find the positions available and the application process.
That's it? All right, thank you. Next up, we have a recognition, and it is a proclamation declaring April 23rd to the 29th National Library Week. Did either of you want to speak to that, or do you want us to just?
So we have Maureen and Lisa here on behalf of the request.
Yeah, we applied for it jointly, and we're just trying to call more attention to the library and everything we have going on, just to keep the library and everybody's awareness as we head towards getting ready for the renovation project.
Excellent. All right. Do you have any questions for them? No?
And I'll just say, I appreciate you two and our amazing librarian for doing, for just making this library a whole new library even without a new building. Every time I go in, I'm like, wow, that space doesn't look the same, and it's awesome. So, thank you all. So I will read the proclamation. Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in lifelong learning, allowing them to live their best life. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions for all members of the community regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve and ensure equity of access for all. Whereas libraries adapt to the ever-changing needs of their communities, continually expanding their collections, services, and partnerships. Whereas libraries play a critical role in the economic vitality of communities by providing internet and technology access, literacy skills, and support for job seekers, small businesses, and entrepreneurs. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that promote a sense of local connection, advancing understanding, civic engagement, and shared community goals. Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. And whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Select Board does hereby proclaim April 23rd to 29, 2023, as National Library Week in the town of Stowe, and that all residents are encouraged to visit the Randa Library and to explore the wealth of resources available.
All right, I will take a motion.
That's right, there's a second one. I move to approve and sign a proclamation for the observance of National Library Week, April 23 to 29, as presented at this meeting.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? And that's unanimous. Excellent. All right, we have some special guests here from the state this evening. Oh, wait.
I think you were going to sign it and present it.
Oh, yes, sorry. Would you like to come up and shake our hand?
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. You just want to get me on camera.
We do, we do.
All right. Now we have some special guests here from the state. We have State Rep. Kate Hogan and State Senator Jamie Eldridge here to give us an update on the fiscal year 2024 state budget. So, who wants to kick it off?
Let's see, who do you want to go first, or? Okay. So thanks so much for having us. I never try to pull that ring. But, but yeah, thank you so much to the Chair and the Stowe Select Board and town's wonderful town administrator for having us tonight. And perfect time for us to come before the board, because as I'm sure you know, the governor came out with her budget last, last month. The House, my understanding, will come out this week. Obviously, Representative Hogan spoke to that, and the Senate budget will come out in May. And so, you know, I had my budget meeting with Senate Ways and Means Chairman Mike Roderick's just a couple weeks ago. So obviously prioritizing things like Chapter 70 and full implementation of the Student Opportunity Act, unrestricted local aid, increasing funding for councils on aging, increasing the budget for Department of Environmental Protection, and then a whole host of programs for, you know, immigrants, those who are less well-off, as well as for more affordable housing, which is clearly a big theme for the, for the session. So, so far revenues are quite robust at the state level, so I do expect it will be another strong budget for the FY '24, but I would also say that I think there's some concern that, you know, there could be a recession sooner than later. So we're certainly putting a good amount of the excess revenue into the Rainy Day Fund, which is, which is quite large. But I also think that there's so many key investments to be, to be made now. It's, will be part of the budget, and it was part of the governor's budget, but of course, last year, the voters passed the so-called Millionaire's Tax, the Mass Fair Share, where it's estimated about $1 billion in revenue will, will come in this year. So, as is mandated, because it was a constitutional amendment, half of that will go to education, half of that will go to transportation. The legislature will decide how that's being spent. So first of all, I would say with respect to transportation, and I know Representative Hogan has been the champion for improving transportation in Stowe, really want to hear from municipal officials, town governments, constituents here in Stowe about, you know, how you would like to see us better, and how you'd like to see us invest transportation dollars. So obviously, there's been lots of conversation about, you know, better access, including better parking at the South Acton train station, you know, shuttle service, roads and bridges, rail trails. So, you know, at each of the Select Board meetings and, you know, regional meetings I go to, just looking to get more, more feedback. And on the education front, I'm very encouraged by this session. I think there's a lot of momentum around some form of a universal pre-K legislation. So I think that's a big priority here from so many young families that are really up against some extremely high costs for childcare. And then, as someone who files the Debt Free College Bill, very encouraged that Governor Healey has proposed, I think it's a $300 million increase in public higher education. And on the Senate side, you know, we'll see what the Senate budget reflects, but Senate President Spoca has talked about free community college, which would be, I think, one positive step towards debt-free college. And I want to note that the Debt Free College Bill is not just community college and state universities, but also vocational schools for, for adults. So, so that's very encouraging, so certainly excited about that. Before I forget, I just, I do have the cherry sheaths from the governor's numbers, both for Stowe and for the Neshoba Regional School District, so I can just hand it to the Chair.
Thank you.
And aside from that, I just would say on the sort of session or committee front, very proud that I was reappointed the Senate Chair of the Joint Committee on Judiciary by Senate President Spoca. So we'll continue to work on criminal justice reform. A fair amount of the reproductive rights bills are going to judiciary, so I'm sure we'll be taking those, those on. And some bills on immigration. So, excited for that. And then I'm also serving as the Vice Chair of the Joint Committee on Environment and Natural Resources. It's no longer ENRA, because agriculture is a separate joint committee, so it's the Joint Committee on ENR. And certainly, you know, looking to not only increase better protecting open space, but, you know, everything from plastic bag ban, a bill I've refiled, to the drought management bill, with Mass Rivers Alliance. And then I work very closely, I know that there were some programs here in Stowe with inspecting wells and having a bill that would regulate state wells, excuse me, regulate private wells, and then provide funding to less well-off homeowners to clean up those wells if things like a high level of uranium or PFAS was in there. Representative Hogan has been the leader on PFAS legislation, so defer to her on that, but obviously hoping we can pass legislation on PFAS this session. So, thanks so much for having me, and I look forward to the conversation after our presentations are done. Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
Yes.
And congrats, it's really great that you're on judiciary. It's a very important vital role, and it's great to see you appointed again. I've been reappointed, well, good evening, everybody. I'm so glad to be here, in person with everyone sitting here, and having implemented our, our COVID world's technology to make it possible for so many more people to see I was working a great deal in the last few years to make this all happen at the State House, and I'm really proud of the fact that when we came back full-time, our hearings remained remote and virtual so that everyone can participate at a greater rate, and we've really seen it, it's just happened. And so we're very, very, very happy. And as my role as the Speaker Pro Tem in the House of Representatives, that was a lot of what I have dealt with over the last couple of years, which is basically making sure that things are working, making them better, and evolving our system so more people have access. I wanted to quickly go over some of what's happened since January. But the most, there was a recent supplemental bill, which is sort of a housekeeping bill that gets, many of these are filed for, for the filling gaps. And most recently, we had a bill that featured about $388 million in spending. That's on Governor Healey's desk right now, but the bill invests about $130 million for SNAP food assistance, $65 million for the continuation of free school meals, and I think that once our, our budget is released, I think people are going to be really pleased with, with what we come, come up with. It also authorizes capital expenditures, about $400 million, so the Mass Works Initiative has been funded again. It has done amazing work in, in this district, and so glad to see it funded at, at a great, great rate. COVID-related items that were part of it also, obviously recognizing the shift as we sit here in this particular meeting. But it permanently allows public corporations and nonprofits to hold certain meetings by means of remote communication, allows notaries public to conduct remote online notarization, extends popular pandemic provisions like outdoor dining services and beer and wine, and cocktails to go about April 2024. Extends the ability of public bodies to allow remote participation by members in public meetings, and extends flexibilities given to municipalities to allow for representative town meetings to be held in hybrid or fully remote capacity. I think that's important to know as we move forward. We've tried to extend everything, so it doesn't have to be a bill, because once it's, once we, you know, actually have to pass legislation, it becomes a bit more extensive what needs to happen to arrive at these. But for right now, it extends a helping hand to businesses and, and cities and towns that need the flexibility, so. And as, as has been said, the state consensus revenue is at about $40.4 billion. We'll see what happens when, when we have our, our bill come out. I think it's, it's either going to be tomorrow or Thursday. Jamie referred to the Fair Share Act or the Millionaire's Tax. That is going to bring about $1.1 billion for FY '24, we're anticipating. And that will be, as Jimmy had mentioned, education and transportation buckets, and that will be split evenly. This will go through many iterations as we go through the House and the Senate, and then back to the governor, so that's sort of what we're looking at. It's, it is, as Jamie mentioned, a robust economy, but we're really, you know, trying to prepare if there's some sort of shallow recession or whatever is, is, and might be happening. The debt ceiling in DC is deeply troubling because that can have its own impact on us here in Massachusetts. Chapter 70, there was about a 7% increase in the governor's budget over FY '23 for Neshoba, and a 2% increase over unrestricted for, for Stowe. And, you know, we're really trying to, to see how best to help. We know we're fully funding the Student Opportunity Act. We'll see what, what's happening with that. And we're also recommending temporary changes to allow school districts greater flexibility in being able to spend almost $1.5 billion in expiring federal funds that are still out there for, for schools. Deeply interested in making sure and ensuring that everybody is able to use those. I just wanted to go over earmarks for the last two years. We have been so lucky with ARPA funds, and so able to use those in projects that are, that are, that are needed. But we're able to install, I was able to secure, or I should say, my partner Jamie and I were both able to secure $100,000 to install a system for the town hall to deal with PFAS. Secured $300,000 to install six of the 11 firefighting cisterns that Stowe needs to adequately respond to threats of fire and increased drought conditions. And I, I committed that and commit to ensuring that those will be, that will be secured through other earmarks that we will have all 13 of those cisterns in the next year, year or two. In the Economic Development Package, I was able to secure $500,000 for Stowe Acres, and finally, $75,000 in FY '23 budget for the Wheeler Road Bridge. So there were, there were some great, great monies that came in, about one little over $1 million, which is usually not what you secure for earmarks.
Yes.
Thank you, Joe Biden.
For Stowe, that's impressive.
Yes, it is. So we were, you know, we're just really pleased we're able to do that, and especially at a time where it could be used and used well, so. There'll be a tax plan that's, that's being released. I haven't really looked at the details, but it's a, it's, it'll be, it'll be interesting to see it overhauls estate and capital gains taxes. It looks to tweak the, the 86 tax cap law, the 62F, and it will also deal with, with increasing senior tax credit and renters' tax credit. So we're, we're interested to, to see, see the final project and see it out there. As Jamie mentioned, the last legislative session, and now in this session, be filing an omnibus PFAS bill that really deals with all of the issues that we're facing, at least initially in, in dealing with PFAS, and I look to really see what we can do to combat the toxic chemical. We know Stowe has been deeply, deeply affected by it. And so we're looking for ways to, both at the source and at, at the wells, be able to create things like, for instance, a PFAS remediation trust, which would provide financial assistance to communities and homeowners impacted by PFAS, and many other ways that we'll be dealing with it on a, on a large scale. So my, to be very brief about it, what it does, it creates an infrastructure to deal with it, both at the source, remediation and discovery, and, and, and work to, you know, be able to deal with our wells and make sure that no one's drinking PFAS from their wells, but also go to the source of where, where it's coming from and be able to, you know, be able to do what needs to be done. I'm, I'm starting a 21st Century Farms Commission, it's passing legislation, be dealing with education and research, renewables, farming and economic development, food systems, many of the things that are, that are happening around farms. Food to table is down the street, and sometimes I think we're, we're a lot better about talking about the food systems than we are about the people that are actually growing the food. So, a little respect. And then also, I'm trying to put together a regional transportation summit with the 495 Metro West Partnership. Basically, it's bringing together all the stakeholders from the Transportation Secretary to all of legislators to look at what we can do, and what we can do better, and how we can create a plan for transportation, east and west, north and south, taking all of the ways that we get ourselves to Boston, or to Worcester, or anywhere else, and, and how we can make it more effective. We have wheels on the ground, they're just, in some ways, going in circles, and we haven't connected anything. And some of it be looking at what would happen if we were able to have someone to actually do transportation coordination as a, you know, in this region, and, and for the purpose of creating more effective ways for us to transport ourselves. So that's more or less what's, what's going on. It's very busy, PFAS, we, we feel that we're moving out of, we're moving out of COVID and, and into sort of a post-COVID era. We know that it's still around, we know that people are still getting it. We know that people are still living in a culture where we have to deal with it, but there's a lot going on, a lot that we're trying to do to move ourselves forward, and pretty proud of the work of the legislature of the last few years, but, you know, always work to do, so, thank you all.
Excellent. Thank you. Do they have any questions? Would you like to start?
Well, I, I'll start with transportation, since you both brought it up. You know, where to begin, but I, I guess, what's really frustrating to me now, and I think I'm not alone with losing total faith in the MBTA. And we are an MBTA community, which is also really frustrating, since we don't really get any benefits from it. And now this new, I mean, the building thing is a great idea, but we, we're not, we don't have a train station, so why do we have to do that? Anyway, the housing thing, I can't remember what it's called, but I just, I, I feel like as much money as we can put, I mean, all this surplus in the state, I, I feel like it should all go to public transportation. I don't want to see it go to roads and bridge, I mean, I know, we have different roads and bridges we have to fix, but, you know, the, the need for public transportation that really works. You know, we've tried three times in the last week to take the train into Boston, and the schedule either doesn't, you know, because you've been trying to take it, but, you know, doesn't run, it runs really late. There's one day, my husband was out there for 45 minutes, when it says it's only 10 minutes late, and it's still waiting, so luckily, someone gave him a ride to Boston, because he otherwise would have missed his meeting. So, it's, you know, it's really embarrassing that a state like Massachusetts can't have a decent public transportation system. And I'm not even talking about past 495, which is a whole nother, you know, wouldn't it be nice to connect to Worcester and Amherst and beyond? So I just strongly encourage anything you guys can do on that, and I'm glad to hear. I know the millionaire tax was supposed, half of it's going to transportation, but I just don't want to see it go to roads as much as, I mean, we did that with the Big Dig, and it didn't get, I mean, that's great and everything, but we need public transportation. Again, my other question was, oh, shoot, now that I'm going to forget, well, you know what, I'll let, I'm sure Hector has questions.
No, I don't know.
You don't?
I do not.
What? Okay.
We're shocked.
There was so much stuff that I'm still trying to absorb.
So much content.
That's all right. Can I ask?
Yeah.
So obviously, we appreciate all you do for us, but I, I couldn't help but notice the 2% on
two percent on unrestricted aid, which amounts to a whole twelve thousand dollars that we have gotten as an increase. Is there any anticipation of movement on that to a higher percentage with the money coming into the state between the, I mean, maybe not for this year, but, you know, with the millionaire's tax and the revenue coming in from online sports betting, will there be some commitment to municipalities to increase or try to increase at the same levels that the state is increasing their revenue?
And the chair sheets are from, those are the governor's numbers. So not sure what, you know, just speaking for the Senate, don't know what they will be, but certainly I am advocating for a bigger increase than that because it is very small for Stowe.
It starts with the governor and then it goes to the House and it goes to the Senate. And as you go through those, each of the, if it's robust, remains robust, I would think that there would be some sort of increases that we would be able to apply. Those are always the things that people go in and talk about first. So, but fully implementing Student Opportunity Act, I mean, there are many ways that we're trying to work around, do workarounds for those things that for each of the districts, whether it be the school district, our own districts and our own towns, that take up some of the, you know, take up some of the weight from what is very expensive. So I'll try to, what I can do is send to what kinds of monies are coming in, all sorts of areas. I didn't want to get too far afield, but I'll definitely do that so you can look both for schools and also for the municipalities, so.
Thank you. And then just, I know with the earmarks, there was a tremendous amount of earmarks awarded. Do you know, have you been given any timeline from DCRs when they plan to start sending out those contracts and those funds? We've been trying to get an update.
Have you been online, have you been online to begin the process?
We were told that we were going to get a contract in a few weeks and that was in February. And I've gotten, I reached back out to DC.
It should be easy enough for, I mean, if you would call my office in March, you know, so we'll easily give a call over in April. I actually asked for every single earmark to be put together and we'll make, we're going to be making our own calls because it was a lot of money.
Yeah.
And I have a feeling that's okay. They had a lot, everyone, you know, I mean, there were just a lot of, and there's a change in administration, so, but, you know, be that as it may, a call over always makes things go faster, so we're happy to do that.
Yeah, I'll follow. It's just we were trying to decide if we needed an article because we don't know what the parameters are that we can use that money for, specifically the Stowe Acres funds. So we were trying to decide if we needed to appropriate some money, but we decided just wait and see what.
Yeah, we'd wait and see, we'll get that through.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
And just related to local aid, I think the House and Senate, Denise, are voting on Thursday for the final chapter ninety money. And I know there's often advocacy to increase that, so I would just say, you know, please let us know how far the money you'll get goes and your needs for roads and bridges in Stowe, because I think it's helpful for us to advocate if we have a better idea of the need, the greater need for more chapter ninety money.
Yeah, well, I think that goes without saying everywhere. I mean, we get about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars and it does not cover much in Stowe. And we don't budget separately for paving, so we exclusively use that money. So anything additional would be wonderful.
Yes, absolutely. Yep, thank you.
Just two more things, then I'll stop. One is, I think the Student Opportunity Act is really exciting to me. What, sort of the same way Rep. Hogan, you mentioned about farmers, community college teachers are getting a shaft on a lot of these, or actually college professors in general, a lot of, they're all going to adjunct because it's getting so expensive to run higher ed. And I just hope that if we make that tuition free, that it doesn't come on the backs of even lower pay for the teachers, because then it drops the quality for community college. I think community college changes everything for a lot of people and it's really important that that make it, that they're accessible, but they also.
I don't think the money stops, I just think where the money comes from.
Well, but if, but if we're not going to be having tuition dollars paying for anything, then the temptation is having to balance the budget. And we know that a lot of colleges are going to adjuncts because then they don't have to pay contracts. Not that they're not great teachers, but they deserve living wages. So that's just my two cents on that. And then.
Could I make a note about that? Just in addition to the debt-free College Bill, there's also the Cherish Act, which is another bill which explicitly increases the pay for faculty.
Oh, great.
So I'll take a look at that.
What's it called?
The Cherish Act.
The Cherish Act, great.
Lovely abbreviation, but it's the major bill by the MTA, you know, that is, to your point, increasing funding for the pay for college faculty and not just the reducing tuition.
Fantastic.
And then just the final plug is, you know, again, with the fact that we've been able to have hybrid meetings, I think, as you said, just has made it hugely important. And I'd love to see this a permanent change instead of just extending it every couple of years, so I'll just.
And we may be reaching out for that to make sure and ensure that once it becomes permanent, that whatever needs to be adjusted or, you know, written into statute, we just want to make it right if it's going to be permanent.
Yeah, absolutely. And I give our town administrator huge credit because she figured it out right away. The technology totally worked and I think, and taught other towns how to do it. It really isn't hard. And I think it's just amazing that what it makes, you know, for people to be able to sign on and just listen, it's really great, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm going to let our superintendent of schools, Kirk Downing, ask any questions.
Sure, thank you very much. Senator Hill, it's interesting to meet you. Representative Hogan and I have met on several occasions. Thank you for both being here. Madam Chair, may I speak on three subjects? The first is in terms of FY twenty four, and you received some lobbying efforts from the Superintendents Association to that effect, so I won't go into great detail about it, but just to sort of put to the record, as we looked at the significant increases from the OSD and added district costs for students who really need those, we as superintendents are not advocating that that not be addressed. We need that, yet it's addressing the pothole it creates in funding that. And I know Governor Healy has offered forward twenty million to address those issues. And when we assess that across the state, it's more around a hundred million. So it's our hope that the House and the Senate can both address that particular issue in FY twenty four, as well as we see the increases in regional transportation being proposed up to ninety percent and circuit breaker rate being from seventy-five, advocating for seventy-five percent to ninety percent, knowing that that would affect us in FY twenty five and beyond in those future efforts. And I think those are going to be critically important, particularly as, you know, here in Neshoba, we're looking at the squeeze of costs. And that brings me to the third element. Trying to tie these up pretty tight. And that is, as you both know, we have a school building project that's in process and we're in the feasibility phase right now. And the timing for which we came forward with this, unfortunately, you know, nobody had the foresight in twenty nineteen of what we were going to see over the next few years. And it's by no fault of the MSBA, and we absolutely recognize that the MSBA is not a regulatory agency, they are a grant agency that supplements what towns and districts do in their localities. But the rising cost and escalating cost of construction funds have so far outpaced the cost to build that even the caps in terms of reimbursement rates can't be met because of the square foot limitations. Currently, it's three hundred ninety-three of reimbursable square footages reimbursable, but the interest, the escalating cost at construction are escalating so fast. And would love to just learn, and certainly not tonight, but maybe an extension from the office, the MSBA is limited, I'm going to possibly mess this up, but one penny on the six point five percent sales tax goes into the MSBA to fund it, so that's done through state statute. And I don't know if there's other mechanisms that are available, because I understand the pinch that the MSBA is, and they've had to slow down projects for that reason, and other projects have had to go back to their towns to address their funding. We're in this window where we haven't incurred debt yet, so we're, you know, in this place where the floor, or I should say the square footed ceiling can't be raised until December, and we're going to be going out to incur debt, and there's no guarantee that will happen this fall, so we're really in a pinch there. And so would love to work with your offices in terms of if there's any efforts out there we can make to address any of those concerns. Great, thank you so much. I'll put some notes on that. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Anything else?
I think that's everything.
Thank you both for coming. And thank you for all of the work you are doing to.
Thank you so much.
Get us money in this community and keep Stowe. The great little community it is. We appreciate it. And thank you for always taking our calls and being willing to work with us. I really appreciate it, so.
Thank you, Megan.
And thank you.
See you back.
All right. Thank you.
Great to see you.
She has to hold it.
It's tricky, but it's not that tricky.
Yeah. So, next on our agenda, I have like four hundred of these now. Why can't I have so many? We have an update from Superintendent Downing on the Neshoba Regional High School Building Project, so I will.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I appreciate that. And thank you to the board for having me back again to talk about our building project.
Oh, sorry, can I just make one comment? The board brief that you're going to speak to is Board Brief Five, which is not the board brief that was in our packets.
Actually, I'm going to speak to Four.
You're going to speak to Four, okay. Five is not what you're speaking to. Got it.
In our cycle of school building committee meetings, and these board briefs are a product of those school building committee meetings, we have our meeting Thursday prior to the Tuesday Select Board Meetings in Stowe. So Board Brief Four wasn't quite ready before your last meeting, which is why it is going to tonight. But in that effort, I will be briefed to address both in this time. Board Brief Four really addresses the question of what is reimbursable by the MSBA and effective rates as opposed to the initial participation rates. The participation rate is a rate that's determined by the MSBA, and there's four factors that go in there, and they're all wealth factors that go into that. And that's why you'll see, if you go to the MSBA, what other towns get, it's based upon those indexes, much like our local minimum contributions, chapter seventy-eight are. And so from that, the construction of what is then known as the effective rate is based upon, it's not a go from the proposed rate down to the effective rate, it's actually sort of a build it up from the base, and that is all the eligible and costs that are reimbursable. So an eight hundred and fifty square foot classroom is one hundred percent reimbursable by the MSBA, for example. What's not reimbursable is costs that can go over what their limits are. So for instance, site work. Site work in the example where your limit is, say, ten million dollars in terms of your site work, but it costs twenty million to put the site back together after the project. Those are things that have to be done and they have to have costs. The MSBA puts caps on those things. They put caps on the number of seats you can have in an auditorium, they put caps on the amount of space you can have on the stage floor, they put caps on those things. And so this, the process and feasibility is around determining all those spaces according to the educational plan that was submitted to the MSBA for approval. And then they match up the plan and decide what are the areas that they participate in. So for instance, we were very happy, and I would love to share this with Representative Hogan, when we had the original submission, an unreimbursable space that we need for our new high school is for the EMT program, a program that's been with us now for over thirty, thirty-five years, I believe. That's not a reimbursable space. However, the MSBA recognized that as a space that is tied to the educational program, is part of the historical fabric of our school system, and they've indicated they will participate in that space. So in that way, it gets very complex and it literally is space by space to get to those places. And so there are ways for us to earn some points, and those are through green energy efforts, through the lead standards. And when you add in what we anticipate, the eligibility rate goes up to fifty-three point zero nine percent. And our OPM and contractors are estimating, based upon what they can tell and what we know they're going to participate in, based upon the first submission, of what is a twenty-six percent effective rate. That is, I can tell you definitively right now on the record, when the effective rate comes through, that's not going to be exactly the number unless they really did a great job of estimating that and predicted what the MSBA will participate in. We won't know that exactly until the next submission, which goes in in June, MSBA meets August thirtieth, I believe, in terms of that participation rate. So there's, we actually submit and then they have a meeting with us to go through the entire plan. I went over that with our OPM today, as a matter of fact. So it's a very complex process, but what I'll remind this board and all the citizens of Stowe is that the MSBA is a grant institution funded through state of Massachusetts at a rate of one penny per six point five sale tax. So they are capped by state statute in terms of their funds. And so they've had to limit incoming projects because they need their funds to cover the current projects based upon raising the rate to three hundred ninety-three square feet of reimbursement. So I can tell you right now, as we look at those escalation costs, and you look midpoint, right now, square footage costs would be somewhere around the mid-seven hundreds, but you base that off of the midpoint of the project. So when you adjust for, say, four percent escalation costs up to what is the anticipated midpoint of the project, that's where you get into rates of nine hundred and twelve dollars a square foot, which are all estimates right now, but it really paints the picture of the economic times we're in. And what I would share with this board is that, you know, we're going to make every effort in the world to put together a school that has a responsible build according to the educational plan. And as I think we said to the Lancaster Select Board once, you know, we're not building an homage to an architect. Where it's going to have, it's going to look very, very nice, but it's also got to be very, very high function and very efficient. So Board Brief Number Five is the most recent board brief, and you'll see that there's a project schedule provided in this board brief in small detail. You can see the full comprehensive piece of that posted in the meeting materials of the School Building Committee, because I know that's quite small. It was added on there just to give some scope of that. But if all the cards fell the right way, we would walk into the doors of the school in the fall of twenty twenty-seven.
All right.
And you can see also that I think is important, the concept that's on the field, you can see where the new building would go, we would need to move the baseball field and mitigate that for a few years. But the design has evolved in times, particularly since the first board brief, where the wetland area to the west of the building, just the service road that's required to circumvent the school by code does get into the hundred-foot buffer of the wetland, not the wetland itself. And the hardscape of that road, we estimate, is actually at or less than the hardscape that is currently in the buffer of the wetland right now. So that will be some engagement with Bolton officials, because we will have to get some kind of variance with that. But early meetings have indicated that those discussions are evolving and will be positive, so.
Excellent. Do we have any questions? Yep.
One question. So when would you break ground to start building?
Good question. Let me get my glasses back on again.
I was going to say, it's real tiny.
If you look at the yellow boxes, the straight yellow line, that's the construction line. So it would really be somewhere in twenty twenty-four. So kind of think of it as we dismiss from school, end of the year, next year's, is when site work would begin.
And where would school be held during construction?
We're at the current high school. So this building is going to be built while we're in session in the current building. We will not have to move at all. And we will not have to do a partial build move and those types of things.
Just kids can't drive to school for a while. There won't be a parking lot.
Yeah, that's, you know, Mr. Durg, you bring up an interesting point. I'm sorry, Madam Chair. You bring up an interesting point, because once we hire a construction manager at risk, they have the real work of saying, okay, we need lay down spaces, we need to reserve topsoil, we need to do alternative parking. they have the real work of saying, okay, we need lay down spaces, we need to reserve topsoil, we need to do alternative parking. That's why in our FAQs, oh, and I should announce to this board, um, and, and to Mr. Mcoski, our, um, the FAQ document has been updated, is out, is now posted. You should be getting a copy of that, and, um, we can speak to that at our next visit as well. But that's why we added the piece in the FAQs today to say, once we have the construction manager in, we'll understand if any other spaces on the site might be limited because of the project.
Yeah, so about, uh, I know well the reimbursement rates and the excluded things, but is there a place where we can see the list of what the, the project managers are expecting to be excluded at this point in terms of the, because it's, basically, it's half of what our reimbursement rate is. And that's way mo- way less than what most projects are, are excluded. So I'm, I'm just concerned about, like, are there ways to get around that? Because, because that's a big difference in terms of what's the cost to the towns.
Where, where we'll get that is, um, in Board Brief Five, you'll see that the submissions have been sent off to the estimators as of, uh, yesterday. Right, April tenth, I think. Those estimates are going to be coming back on May twelfth to the school building committee, and then we'll be meeting with the school committee on the eighteenth, where we'll have a better set of those ideas. It's, it's, it's a tough game to play right now. It, you know, I went into the MSB website to look at school districts and what is their, their rates and what they're getting reimbursed, and it varies all over the place in terms of percentage of what, you can think of it in terms of percentage of what you're reimbursed or just the true delta. Because some, uh, school systems start with a reimbursement rate of almost eighty percent. Others start with reimbursement rates under thirty percent. And that's all based on the wealth factor of that community. And so when we look at those things, um, that's, that's where it gets really, really tricky. I know we're going to incur, like, we're going to incur site costs above the requirements, and there's just no way around that. We know that our communities expect us to be building this responsibly, eh, with green energy in mind. And, and those have costs. Those give us discounts as well. And then we get rebates. So for instance, um, as we talk about geothermal wells, you'll see on Board Brief Five, we submitted an invoice for test wells. There are rebates that we receive from the state domain. So there are going to be other ways to sort of balance out some of those costs. But the escalation costs, eh, I, I mean, that's what's really, 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 really hurting us on this project. And the KBA estimators, I went back and looked at, uh, their estimation of escalation costs the last three years. Their forecast that they put out three years ago was pretty on mark. And right now, it's, it's looking around the three to four percent mark in, uh, escalation costs over the next few years. So budgeting, you know, a project at four percent escalate, escalation costs, I think, is conservative, so that we don't find ourselves in a position, um, like Diamond, where we have to go back to voters and say, we're, we, we need more money. But they were caught on the other side because they were funded a year ago.
But so, so you're saying that even though we started with a forty-nine and a half percent reimbursement rate, that, that, that the MSBA would, would give less than that because the costs have gone up?
Two things. So with the escalation costs, that three hundred ninety-three square foot ceiling.
Yeah.
They're up against that. So when we, when, even when we get i- i- if, if the cost per square foot of the project is nine hundred and twelve.
Yep.
Per square foot, and the ceiling is at three ninety-three, and the ceiling stays at the point where we're funded.
Yeah.
You can, you can see that, that that's, three ninety-three is less than forty percent. That's a big chunk of it. So those escalating costs took a big hunk out of what is potentially reimbursable, as well as just some of the specific examples I gave you that, that.
Okay. Um, the only other question, I, when I was looking at the drawings, um, because, because these were just little. Um, is there a pre-K classroom in the back of the school, or is that an early draft?
There is, and, um, I think that's just, if you look on Board Brief, uh, Four, and look at the conceptual design above that, um, this has adjusted some since that time, but the general location is right where it is, in the top right-hand corner of the design where the pre-K is. And the MSBA in the first submission, uh, did indicate they will participate in reimbursement on that program.
But why are, why is there a pre-K at the high school?
So the idea around the pre-K that, the high school is tied into the educational plan. So in the educational plan, we're, uh, building, uh, early childhood educational track for students. And so in that, students will be participating in learning early childhood skills, family management skills, those types of things, so that they come out of that with a, a certification, if you will, through Nishoba, that they can then go on and do some caretaking, uh, for families. So it's, it's part of that human health development department that we're tying into the EMT program, the health program, as well as physical fitness.
That's, that's fascinating.
We do have a demand for, for preschool in our region as well.
Yeah.
And it would be, uh, it's, it wouldn't, I know we, we center it pretty much in our towns, but it would be available to, to residents. That would be all part of the organization of how pre-K is addressed.
Fascinating.
So that program has, uh, the, the, the classroom for teaching the high school students, which is also the EMT classroom, which is also going to be the classroom for our industrial ed courses before they go into, um, you know, their actual, um, workshop. So all the spaces have to be utilized at a rate of eighty-five percent. So we have to produce an academic schedule that shows how we'll be using those spaces eighty-five percent of the time. So we're not building space that is underutilized.
Right, excellent. And is the, is the MSBA also participating in the wood metal shop?
Uh, yes, they are. Yes, they are. That's one of the places we frankly had, had to reduce. Our current woods metal square footage is a little over four thousand square feet. Uh, we're limited at two thousand three hundred. That is non-negotiable. So we've worked with that department, and we're going to work on a shop that's twenty-three hundred square feet.
Okay. More questions? More questions? Any questions? Okay, fantastic. Um, Ernie, I'm not taking any, we have a very full meeting tonight, sorry. I'm so, so sorry. Um, all right, thank you so much.
Yeah, and again, I'll just, uh, for our citizens that are out there.
Yep.
We're on a sort of a communications tour. I've appeared at all the council on agings in our three towns, as well as I'll be going to the Rotary, and, uh, we hope to do some revert, return visits to those organizations, as well as, uh, joint PTO school council meetings in all three of the towns. So we're going to continue to, to be on this tour of getting out information. I encourage people to follow that, so.
Fantastic. Thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for having me.
And we'll do for Board Brief Six.
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, may I ask, before I call the planning board, can we take the, um, Hidden Cultures request?
Yes, I was going to suggest doing that as well. So we are going to move up. We have a permit before us for Hidden Cultures Community Art Show opening. And we have two representatives from Nasha here this evening. So you want to kick it off, Abby?
Sure. Sort of just, now I'm forgetting my stuff. We are, so this will be the third year that we're doing an art show, that Nasha's hosting an art show, second year at the library. Between our last show last year and this year, policies were put in place to require a, um, special event permit, and we are, uh, we've collaborated with Clover Road Brewing Company in Hudson to serve beer at the opening. So we, so we also required the, um, liquor license, one-day liquor license. Um, so we hopefully have all of the paperwork in there. We have permission from the library board and from, and from Tina and, um, trying to think what else we've gotten. Both of us have, uh, crowd manager, uh, certification that we, I don't know if we got that in time for last week to get on your agenda, but we, we've done it since and forwarded it around.
Great.
That's, it's just for, uh, it's open to the community, um.
Have you had all of the submissions so far? Like you, everything's like ready to go.
Yep, we finalized all the submissions last week, and we're sending out, um, acceptance, I need to send out acceptance emails in the next day or two. And we'll be setting up the show, um, on the weekend of the twenty-ninth, and it should be up. We're going to extend it, uh, through Spring Fest, so people can come and see it during Spring Fest.
Lovely.
I actually meant to make sure that was cool with them, but. But we talked to Spring Fest folks. They were like, yeah, that'd be great, so, um.
I love it.
Yeah.
All right. Does it, I have any questions? Hector.
And are you two tips certified, or?
We are not, but Clover Road is. They have, and I made sure that was accepted, because we will not be dealing with any alcohol. They will be dealing with all the alcohol. They will serve it themselves, they're, they're bringing it in. They, I think, are required to do the ID checking as well.
So they'll be doing it, okay.
Yeah, we're going to provide them with, like, bracelets and things so that people can get their IDs checked and then have a bracelet, but, um, they're going to do that.
No, this is fantastic. Thank you for putting this forward. It's, it's just, it's nice to be sort of, and, uh, we're not po- out of COVID, but like to sort of see that we can, um, gather as a community again in these spaces. So I appreciate the work that you're putting, putting together for that. Um, and with that, I will, if nobody has any other questions.
Can I just make a comment? Um, so both of your, um, motions are provided, that all requirements have met. I will just tell you, they have all been met.
Great.
Um, the, they are serving prepackaged snacks, so we don't need anything further from the Board of Health, so they have signed off as well. Police and fire had some initial concerns, they've met and worked those out, so we are all good on our side.
Okay. All right, and I will take a motion.
I move to approve a one-day liquor license for Nasha, Kariv, Abby Morgan, Event Manager, for Wednesday, May third, twenty twenty-three, from five thirty to seven thirty PM at the Randall Library, as all requirements have been met and approved by the administration.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous.
And I move to approve the event permit for Nasha, Kariv, Abby Morgan, Event Manager, for the Hidden Cultures Community Art Show opening on Wednesday, May third, twenty twenty-three, from five thirty to seven thirty PM at the Randall Library, providing that all requirements have been met, which they have been, and approved by the administration.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. Thank you. Looking forward to this. This is going to be fantastic. All right, are we?
Thank you. Yeah, I just gave Valerie heads up.
Okay, great.
Do you want to do minutes?
We could do minutes, yes.
Is the Elizabeth Burke Apartments going to take very long?
Is the Elizabeth Burke Apartments going to take very long? Is the attorney on?
Um, it should not take too long.
Does the attorney need to be?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm happy to, if we're waiting for, if we're waiting for, they can wait a couple minutes.
Sure.
It, it would be nice if you get all eight members to sign the covenant.
All five of us?
Yeah.
Okay.
When they get back.
But that won't happen.
No.
Our attorney wants it by Friday. It won't happen by Friday.
Maybe it happens before they file a do with registry.
Yes.
So we're just, it's essentially, we're just, I'm sorry, we're extending the covenant from the current, are they aligned? Oh, are we going to do that, or are we going to, sorry?
Oh, I think that is the, is that the, he's raising his hand.
Yes, I don't know. I, Rita is the one I was expecting.
Oh, okay.
I've asked him to unmute. I have asked him to unmute, he's not unmute.
No, Rita, Rita's waving at you.
I don't know who is.
Yeah.
Okay, I've been unmuted. Could you unmute Rita? Try, try Rita.
There we go.
There she goes.
Yes, it's lovely, thank you.
Sorry, we gotta, we keep it locked down, so.
We've had her fun, so, you know, anyway.
Understandable. Um, so I, I heard, um, Ernie Dodd.
Yes, he's in the room.
Speak up. Um, so I don't know, Ernie, if you would like me to speak, or, or if you have words for, um, the select board.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Rita. Thank you.
Thank you. So thank you all for, um, putting this matter on the agenda for us. Um, this is, I think, the second time that we've come to you on this, uh, project. We've been through a couple of iterations of, um, redesign and permitting for the new thirty-seven apartment building for senior housing at, uh, the site adjacent to the current plantation apartments. Um, this iteration now combines the new development with the existing development of, uh, fifty senior, um, affordable housing units that are, uh, already on the site. Um, and so the covenant that we are proposing is one that we, um, prepared in concert with, um, input from the, uh, zoning board of appeals to complement the forty B permit that they issued, um, earlier in the, um, uh, earlier in the process. Um, as you know, I think your, your, um, staff has told you, and your, your council has corroborated, right, that, that, that permit is under appeal. But, um, as counsel for the applicant, and I think in, in conference with, um, town council, we feel that this is still an appropriate matter for the select board to consider now. The, um, the overall intent of the covenant is to give the town an additional means to enforce terms of the permit, um, make sure that, uh, roadways serving multiple lots are maintained, make sure that the town is not responsible for any of that maintenance, and, and that would not be, um, asked to, uh, consider that, that driveway for public dedication, um, as well as, um, ensuring that we are maintaining other improvements required under the forty B comprehensive permits, such as the water systems, which are there for firefighting purposes and the like. Um, it's largely consistent with the, um, covenant that was on the original, uh, plantation apartments project back in nineteen eighty-two. Um, but it expands the covenant to now apply to both components of the development, the new thirty-seven unit building, um, the existing single-family house, which is being combined into it, and, um, the existing fifty units on the site. Um, it does allow for greater density than was originally contemplated. The nineteen eighty-two, uh, covenant contemplated just fifty units, uh, on that site. We are now expanding the site, so we're adding more acreage, but we're also, uh, increasing the numbers of units there. Um, and I think I'll, I'll, I'll pause, because I've said a lot of things, and I'm not sure if it's information that you need or if you have other questions.
Did you have any questions, Hector? No? Did you have any? I'm, I'm, yeah, this is great.
It's exciting to hear.
Faster we can get this moving forward, the better. Um, if you have other, Denise, did you have anything?
Nope. Uh, council's reviewed it, and as Rita mentioned, has, um, recommended that you act favorably.
I can move on. Okay.
All right.
Then I will take a motion.
All right. I move to approve and sign the covenant for the Elizabeth Burke Apartments as presented, which will replace the nineteen eighty-two covenant.
Second.
Um, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that's unanimous. All right.
Great.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
On moving forward.
Thank you.
All right. Um, apologies to the planning board. We just have had to do a whole bunch of jumping around tonight. This is, we've got a full one. Um, so we have the planning board here this evening, um, to present to us the war- well, we've done a lot of talking about the Lower Village warrant article, um, but there are some other warrant articles that, um, they are putting forward. And so we wanted to make sure that they were able to come and sort of give us, um, give us some more information. So, um, Valerie or Lori, whoever wants to kick it off, I defer to you.
Sure, I can kick it off. Uh, Valerie was kind enough to put together a summary. Um, you know, we were here back in December, and at that time, um, I know we had given input on the first three here that you see, um, that we planned to bring forward. Um, I'm not su- I know we talked about the Lower Village one last week, so I'm not sure. I, I think, uh, everyone on the select board is familiar with that one. Um, certainly happy to answer questions about it. Um, but I think we also want to make sure you are, have a full understanding of the other three articles put forward. Um, so I know you have the memo. I, I can certainly run through them if you want me to, or we can open it up to questions if you feel people have read it and we just want to start a dialogue.
Um, I, I don't think, I don't think she needs to read through it, because I've, I've read it, you've read it, right? Yeah, does it, would you guys have questions?
I still don't understand it, but.
Which one?
What, what part of it don't you understand?
Um, I guess I'm confused as to what is the purpose of the adult active neighborhood overlay? What?
So the, sorry, Lori, you can speak to it.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, uh, we. Yeah, I mean, essentially, uh, we, there, as you see from the memo, there are two things here. Those are parcel that was left out of the district, um, and we are meant to put it in. Um, frankly speaking, if we put it in, then they will move forward and build um, giving us a bigger buffer to the Hill Corzine property. And if we don't put it in, they'll build the same number of units just closer to the Hill Corzine property. Um, and it was certainly, and the planning board agrees, but it was the Kong Kong who asked them to change the layout, to move it away from the Corzine Hill prop- Hill Corzine property. Um, it was the intent that this piece of parcel be in the overlay district, and so uh, we simply are putting it in. Um, uh, you know, so I think as the memo states, there were two specific mistakes that we're correcting. One is to get this parcel in the overlay. And again, if we put it in, then they'll build the um, development away for, with a bigger buffer to Hill Corzine. And if we don't put it in, they're gonna build the same number of units, but it'll be closer to Hill Corzine, which is something that the Kong Kong and the planning board didn't want. Um, the second piece in here is um, somehow, um, the current bylaw does not allow, um, detached garages and um, that was an oversight.
The part I actually understood, but.
Bylaws is attached or detached? The bylaw does not allow attached garage. Thank you. Right, right. Right, it only allows detached picture.
Right, yeah.
Um, so, and so we are also correcting that.
Great, thanks.
Um.
And the other two weren't.
Yeah, I, and I appreciate that that you're moving forward with the phase growth deletion because I feel like that's done.
Yeah, I mean, the input to us has been very clear.
Yep. Yep.
Won't stand up in court.
Yep, right. Um, and then can you speak to, because I just want it on record, what is happening with number four, the registered marijuana establishment overlay amendments, that nothing major is happening, but that it is also correcting and clarifying?
Yeah, I mean, this, this change honestly is administrative, I think, because we're simply aligning the verbiage and numbering with the state. Nothing that, there's no use change. This, this change does not change what still allows or doesn't allow. It simply is getting the language and numbering in line with um, the state's language.
Okay, it's all good. Um, and then it looks like you have, for this town meeting, have dropped a wireless district overlay that you had to s- would kicking around in December?
Yeah, and I can give you an update on that, which is, um, so the I can't, the um, Stow Acres development. Um, when they created the plans for that, the owners um, designated a s- a place that they wanted to allow a cell to- cellphone tower. Unfortunately, that is an agreement they came to with Verizon in terms of the placement. Well, I'm sorry, it's the really the property owner who wanted it in a specific place. Verizon said that was an okay place. But the fact is, putting it there is not in alignment with our bylaw. Um, I think we currently say that cell towers cannot be within, is it a thousand Valerie?
Yes.
A thousand feet of residence, and this would literally be maybe a tenth of that.
Okay.
So what now, uh, so what we did, um, was, um, we started researching or our staff helped us research, um, where in town could we put a cell tower that would actually help this specific area that they were trying to cover?
Okay.
Um, even if it meant, um, increasing the um, height of an existing tower or et cetera. So we tried um, to research uh, different alternatives. Um, and frankly, you know, that's taking time and we haven't really come to a conclusion. And I think also Verizon um, is, you know, kind of protesting, saying, oh, they don't know if other locations can work. Um, but of course, that's what they're going to say now. Um, so just to make sure everyone's up to speed, you know, that doesn't, you know, given the telecommunications, federal telecommunications act, um, that doesn't mean that Verizon can't come back and basically sue the town and want and put it there anyway. But again, I think given that our bylaw says it can't be within a thousand foot of residence, um, the business owner, I mean, the property owner, and Verizon chose to ignore that by law when they chose the location.
Got it.
And it would be one thing if it were, you know, nine hundred feet away. Um, even eight hundred, but we're talking, I can't remember, it was very, very close. Um, I, does anybody here, Valerie, do you remember how close it was? I think it was less than four hundred, two, like two or three hundred, right?
Yeah.
Um, so that's basically saying, uh, that's just completely ignoring the bylaw.
Any other questions?
No, it's all good. Thank you for the update.
Yes, and I appreciate that because I think, um, you know, I, lower village is is its own beast, but there are other things. And so I'm glad that we were able to chat about it. Did you guys have any questions for us or anything? Your, before we have you go back to your meeting? And we go back to ours.
No, I mean, I I think um, certainly if you have any additional feedback on lower village, happy to hear it because we do have our public hearing next week.
Okay.
Um, and so, uh, you know, plan to get additional feedback from residents then. So um, you know, if you have additional feedback, happy to take that as well.
Great.
Is, is the public hearing on Tuesday as well?
Yeah.
Okay.
Same time as the finance hearing?
Okay.
It's at eight PM.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, thank you all and have a good rest of your meeting.
All right. Thank you Lori and everybody. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Um, all right, what's next? Hmm, it's just a smorgasbord. Um, all right, Denise, talk to us about Middlesex County retirement request for acceptance. What did you have a question?
I forgot. Well, we didn't confirm the this special town meeting date. It's on his schedule, but I wasn't sure if that was firm or not.
It was not, um.
All right. Thank you, Ernie.
Thanks, Ernie.
Nice to see you.
He was hoping for it to be firm and we were going to discuss it, but when I talked to him.
Early, whatever. Okay.
Earlier. Um, we're still looking at roughly um, by September twentieth. Um, he, we actually have a meeting tomorrow, the three TAs and the school. Um, they are going to try to convince the three towns to have our town meetings and elections on the same day. Um, but from the folks I've talked to here, seem to want to stick with the Saturday. Um, especially given that we may have more um, articles, um, charter change articles, more zoning articles. Uh, and the other two towns, my understanding is have no appetite for Saturday. So.
And is, is it just a a town meeting or is it, is there gonna be a, an election, I mean, a vote as well, right?
Yep, it requires a ballot. So, so we would look at, um, the dates we've, we've been talk- talking about here internally um, would be potentially the ninth and then the sixteenth for the election or the sixteenth and the twenty-third for an election. Um, because it's my understanding, and we're hoping to clarify this tomorrow, it's my understanding that we need to have the town meeting vote by the twentieth, not the whole thing. So if we, so that would give us an extra week. Um, just because we were not expecting it to be quite so early in September that we'd need to have a special town meeting, so.
Okay.
Because then the warrant would close, you know, mid-August.
Getting out of border.
No, it's, it's fine. No, it's really fine. That makes sense. It's nice to have an idea, but.
And their schedule, I mean, with these lovely letters, but it's, and they're not getting back. It said the MSBA is not gonna get back to them until the thirtieth of August. And it's sixty days, not thirty days. So that's not giving us much time to find out if we're only getting half the reimbursement rate that we were expecting.
Right.
So, yes, I won't say anymore.
No, it's, you know, absolutely. Okay. Um, all right, okay. I don't, could you talk to us?
Yes, I just have to scroll through. Um, there's, there's not a lot I can add. Um, so this is, if I can get to the right page.
This is the, the retirement.
This is a request from the retirement board, um, to do a cost of living adjustment for our retirees. Um, the increase would take effect this fiscal year, but it would not affect our um, contribution until fiscal twenty-six, I believe, um, based on the way it falls. Um, I included that first page, I included, um, once, once this request came out, all the towns sort of started a, a thread about where folks were gonna be voting and, um. So right now, not one community has voted it down. Um, everyone has been in favor of it. They need, um, they need two thirds of the systems to approve it. Um, so it would be, instead of a three percent increase, a five percent increase on the sixteen thousand dollar COLA base. So it's a minimal increase on a minimal amount of pension. Um, and we have, um, and I think it's in here, one of the smallest number of retirees in the plan.
Right, yeah.
So it is a small increase to our retirees. I would recommend favorable action. It does not cost us much in the long run to um, give them an additional COLA.
Great. Um, any questions?
Does it have any, I mean, since we've been talking a lot this year about OPEB, OPEB, whatever, but you know, the the thing we haven't funded enough of, I mean, this is all tied into that, right?
No.
Or it's not, that's the way.
This is strictly, right, so this is strictly, the request from retirement is just for the current retirees on their pension. The OPEB is our current employees when they retire in the future and their benefits.
That's right. All right.
So that's unrelated.
Awesome.
And we have forty-six according to that.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
All right, that was my only question.
That's good. Uh, if, did you have questions?
Nope.
Nope, great. I'll take a motion.
All right. I move to accept chapter two sixty-nine of the Acts of twenty twenty-two, a local option allowing a one-time increase to the cost of living adjustment COLA granted to retirees by Middlesex County Retirement in fiscal twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, and that's unanimous. Next. Um, okay, so we, there's the union contract. This is what we looked at. Have we seen this?
Yes.
Yes.
This is.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, so we, I presented this to you in executive session.
Yep.
Um, the fire union has since ratified.
Right.
Um, so now it's coming back to you to ratify their contract. Um, there are no changes since we previously discussed it. Um, if you want me to touch upon it, I can.
Um, I, I mean, I've, I don't know. Do you want Denise to touch upon it?
I didn't have anything.
I didn't have any questions, no. Um, all right, if we have no more questions, then I'm gonna take a motion.
Uh, I move to approve the fire local thirty-two sixty-two union contract for July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, and authorize the town administrator to sign on behalf of the town.
Second.
Um, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And that's unanimous. Oops, that's not that one. All right, next we have the town administrat- we're approving and signing the town administrator's fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-six contract. Um, again, we met in executive session, um, with this one. And, hold on, wow, this is a lot. Um.
Page seventy-seven.
I know, we'll get there eventually. Um, and so we, during executive session, we um, voted unanimously to approve this contract. Um, it is, um, the, the takeaway for the town, and I'll say this again at town meeting, is that there is an increase to the town administrator's compensation. Um, we did a, what did we call it, a salary comp, salary survey, um, of local, um, other towns that were similar in population, um, local to here, um, and found that we were um, underpaying our TA um, even to get up to the lowest level by about thirty thousand dollars. So we um, are rectifying that with this. Um, it doesn't even, and I I want to also be clear, this does not even bring her up to the, the, it sort of brings her to the midsection, um, with this, but um, I think we all felt that this was um, a good decision. Does anybody else have anything else I want to say? I'm, now I'm getting tired. Like, this is not a good thing. Do you have anything you want to say?
No, I, I agree. We, it's time to bring her up to
Yeah.
competition.
Yes, yeah.
Yes.
Um, and, yeah, so I, if we have no further discussion, I am happy to take a motion to.
I will, I move to approve and sign the town administrator's contract for July first, twenty twenty-three through June thirty, twenty twenty-six.
Second.
And I will just note, that reminds us that we've changed the renewal date to tie our, our annual budget, not based on our annual.
Yes.
There is one question I had. Is there an overlap between the current and the new contract?
No, because the new one will take effect July one.
And the current one ends June thirtieth?
No, but when a new contract is in place, it will supersede the previous.
We don't have to vote, we don't have to say anything official that says supersede.
Okay, yeah, that's what I was worried about.
Yeah.
I think actually the language somewhere in the contractor basically says it supersede.
It supersedes everything. Okay, good.
All right, did you second that motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Denise.
Thank you, Denise.
Budget discussion. Are we going through the budget line by line?
Yes, oh no.
So let me give you an overview.
Yeah.
Um.
That would be good.
Let me, let me pull it up and then we can talk about however you'd like to talk about it.
And also can we remind the viewers that the finance committee will be going through the budget and their budget presentation next Tuesday? Information is on Zoom on, or it's not on Zoom. It will be on Zoom. Information's on the website. And so if people want to um, to sign up into that meeting as well, that will be happening.
Yes, although I will say, um, the finance committee will be focusing on the town meeting warrant articles. Uh, we've gone through the budget at the last few meetings, so
Right. Right.
I don't know how in-depth they'll go again, but, um, yes.
Yes. Sorry, I think that's more what I meant, is the, the bigger ones.
Yes, there will certainly be discussion at the finance meeting. Um, so the warrant you have in front of you has my revised letter, which will articulate some of this. That is not posted yet, um, but I will be posting that shortly. So you know, the major changes this year, I've talked about, um, I talked about in my financial presentation, uh, talked about it a few times. Um, I am supporting the request from the police chief to add an additional patrol officer um, with the proposed new developments at Athens, um, Stow Acres, the plantation, Elizabeth Brooks um, apartments. Uh, we are seeing a need for one additional patrol officer. Uh, we have a number of overtime shifts that are going unfilled, um, opportunities that just we don't have the resources for. So adding an additional patrol officer, um, will assist us with um, dealing with those issues and complying with the post requirements the Peace Officer Standards and Training Commission, which no longer allows, um, what I will call a true reserve, like we've always had them. Um, reserves are now required to be fully trained as all full-time officers. If we are going to pay to fully train someone, we might as well get the benefit of them being a full-time officer. Um, so that recommendation is in the budget. Um, additionally, I am supporting the request of the fire chief to add two full-time firefighters. Um,
Okay.
We've talked about this a bit, that um, I do believe the hybrid model that we have works, but we still need to find the correct balance of full-time to work with our call members. Um, adding these two full-time firefighters, um, if we are able to add, so a couple of things. We are also applying for a grant for these, so the positions will not be filled until we hear about the grant. Um, which hopefully will be a little sooner than last year. Uh, we're hoping by September we hear about them. If we're awarded the grant, the grant pays for the first three years of salary and benefits for up to four, um, full-time firefighters. If we do not get the grant, we will hire two. Um, when the time comes that we hire two additional, um, we are looking to change four, so that would give us six, um, firefighters plus the captain plus the chief. We would be looking to change, uh, four firefighters to a twenty-four hour schedule. Um, so that they would work twenty, I think it's two twenty fours and I think four days off, then two twenty fours. Um, and that would allow to have a full-time firefighter on every shift of the week. Um, currently overnight, we're running with per diems and calls. There are some shifts on the weekends that we don't have a full-timer. So this will allow us to have consistency, um, some um, accountability and obviously have more resources. Um, you may, by reading the weekly police blog, know that we're getting more and more calls, especially medical calls, um, that are happening simultaneously. So this will again, give more resources in the station for when those calls come in and the ability for them to respond um, quicker or more efficiently to, uh, the needs of the community. So I am supporting that um, as well. Uh, the only other change in personnel, um, is the addition of Or I should say the incorporation of the procurement and grants administrator into the general fund budget. Um, you all were um wonderful last year approving the use of ARPA funds, uh, the position has been remarkable. Um, even on this morning's department head meeting, department heads were raving about the resources they're getting from Ashley, who is our procurement's administrator. Um, just by, you know, having her here doing the work that she's doing, she's freeing up our department heads who. No longer have to research how to do a procurement or what is needed or following up, and um, she's discovering, I meant to mention this last meeting. She's discovering contracts that expired years ago that were still operating under, um, you know, contracts that were never done, so. We're cleaning things up, putting us in compliance, and it has, it has been a huge resource for us, so those are really the big. Uh, changes on the um municipal side. The fire contract, as you know, you just approved, so that is incorporated in here, the police union, we still have not settled that contract. So we had to make some assumptions and put a number in the budget, if we end up negotiating a number outside of that, they would have to wait for. Um, the fall town meeting to appropriate any additional funding. The dispatchers' union is finalized, um, and the highway union was settled last year, so, um, so this does incorporate some, you know, union changes with new contracts. Um, additionally, I know there have been some questions on the percentages for some of the line items, specifically with salaries. Uh, the cost of living that was granted this year was three percent, um, and those positions that are covered under the personnel bylaw. In grades one through five were granted a step increase, so when we did the bylaw changes last year at town meeting. Uh, we changed the step schedule, uh, historically here, it was every two years that folks waited for a step, so. We've implemented, this year it's grades one through five, next year it's six through eight, so that we're not budgeting for all those steps every year, we'll alternate every other year. Um, and so, you'll see some that have, and it really depends on the grade and the percentage between the steps, so you'll see some fluctuation there. Um, additionally, some um departments calculate, calculate out the number of days they work in the year. So it's very specific to how many work week, workdays there are, some base it on a week, so you'll see some minor fluctuations. Um, and I will just call attention to the library director, um, her, she is not taking a pay cut. Um, her, her salary was miscalculated last year, so we're just correcting that. Let me see what else, the other issues in the library, obviously with the proposed um new building, uh, we are. Looking to reevaluate, um. So, one of the things that we've done, which I have touched upon a few times, is I'm consolidating um the utilities. Uh, through the department, so currently the police department, the library, the highway department, all pay separately for gas and electric. Whereas the town building and Pomposidikit are covered by facilities, so we are consolidating all that into the facilities. So you'll see some departments have decreased their expense line because they're not, we're just shifting those funds to where they should be. Um, so that accounts for the library, as well as, obviously, we don't need everything that they need to run an entire building during this um period of construction. So we will reevaluate that budget, um, as we go through and figure out what the needs will be with the new building. Um, but this is what the director has um requested and thinks that is the accurate budget for. The next fiscal year. Um, the other big ticket items which we have touched upon is health insurance went up, uh, almost fourteen percent. Um, our liability insurance has gone up minimally, we are locked into a two-year rate, so the only increase that we've seen. Is on the workers' comp side, which is not locked in, but the um property and casualty has um stayed steady. Um, obviously, the schools, we've talked about the school expense, um, Minuteman has come in at about a twenty percent increase. And um Nishoba is at a two point, where are we, two point eight two percent increase. Um, I do just wanna point out that you'll see the requested um column. Shows no increase from last year versus the recommended column has the increase, um, and that's only because. When our deadline came for recommend, uh, requested budgets, the school hadn't finalized theirs yet, so that's the only reason why I'm recommending so much more than. I am not recommending more, um, so those, oh, and the other big item is um. The IT expense line, um, we have been lucky enough again to utilize CARES Act and ARPA funds for the last few years to make some much-needed. Technology changes, um, the uh telephone system that we now, um. We lease the equipment and now we pay for a different kind of service than the regular. Um, telephone lines, so that has been incorporated in, as well as the Microsoft Office three sixty-five licenses that we've now paid for two years with. ARPA funds and CARES Act funds, so that has to be incorporated in, um. You know, there are more expenses that we're covering with ARPA that will eventually, we'll have to work in, but so this is gradually putting some things in, and then next year you'll see another round of. Expenses that we've had the benefit of, you know, three or four years not having to pay for out of general fund monies. Um, those are really the highlights, and then I'm happy to go through departments, um, if you have questions. Um, answer anything else. Um, I will actually touch upon one more thing, sorry, um, the health department, uh, we have had a shared. Um, physician as the administrative assistant, she spends fifteen hours a week in planning and ten hours a week in the board of health. Um, and with the planning department taking over zoning, which you'll notice that as well, um, we are moving that position fully. The twenty-five hours into planning, and we need to backfill the board of health, um, but they have asked to add five additional hours, so that actually includes five additional hours. To provide some redundancy in the health department. That is our only department of one, and so when, um, you know, when Cindy wants to take a vacation, or when she's not in. Um, she has to just leave a note on the door and um comes back to it, so this will provide some much-needed assistance. We have actually um hired someone who starts the week after school vacation, who does the same job in another town. So it should be really great and a, and a really good resource, in addition, it will help um the planning department immensely to have more hours up there.
Excellent.
And now I will take questions.
Well, I think you answered, so the, the municipal building property expense that went up, that's the, that's consolidating utilities into that.
Yes, I mean, I will say, we did have to increase some other minor things, but the majority of it is the money from highway, library, and police, their. Gas and electric.
So, and we already talked about wages and the library, um, so, I just, this is more of. An opportunity to explain to people might be listening, on the first page, the thing that jumps out is the first line, the property tax is going up. Eleven point six percent, and this is the one I've been having a hard time trying to explain to people, um. Because it feels, I mean, it's been a sticker shock for a lot of people, and then it's, I'm just, I just, I guess I wanna make sure that we're not. Um, like, oh, we have all this money, we can start spending more money, um, in terms of what that, that percentage just, because it's there, even though I know at the end. It says we're going up by three point one seven percent.
So, the property tax line is, um, the eleven percent is very deceiving, because if you look further down. And I don't know what page it falls on, on the printout, um, but you will see where it says property tax revenues, and it starts with prop two and a half levy limit. And, I mean, I can actually share my screen if that's more helpful.
The bottom of page two, oh, actually, I'm just printing it out, that's.
Yeah, so I'll actually share it, so folks at home can follow along, um. So, um, this thirty-one million is based on last year, so we had last year total property tax, which was the prop. Two and a half levy, or, or tax levy, the amended new growth from the previous year that we did not account for. The two, prop two and a half percent increase, and then the new growth that we accounted for in fiscal twenty-three, which came to a total of thirty-one million and change. So that's start, that's where we start looking at the budget, that's what we raise based on last year. Then we look at our two point five percent increase, which is a seven hundred and seventy-five thousand, and our estimated new growth, the revenue on new growth. We estimate at two hundred and fifty thousand, um, from there, and this is what makes up the eleven percent, so it's not, it's a deceiving number, is the next section. So this is where we add the debt exclusions that have been voted by the town, so, yes, that's their tax revenue that they're paying, but it's not. New money, it's not a new um assessment that they're paying, but this is what has been voted by the taxpayers for. Debt exclusions, the one point nine million, um, and then the eight hundred and eleven thousand is built into the. Nishoba and the Minuteman budgets, because they bill us as part of our assessment for those, so when you add all of those, you get that thirty-four million dollars. And it looks like an eleven percent increase, but quite frankly, it's really this three point three one percent. And that is the last year's tax plus our two, two and a half percent, plus the new growth number.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I knew you could explain it better than I could, so.
Yes.
And then on the, um, the capital, no, is that what it was called, where's that sheet, oh, see now I've lost the sheet.
Special articles?
Um, yeah, I think it was the special articles, and I guess I had just questions about, and I think actually Lori might have been answering, what the heck did I do with that page?
Yeah, so it was the end, oh, yeah, you might, I'll, I'll put it up here.
Oh, there, it's right in front of me, so, um, the planning cane land, thirty-five thousand, is that related to? Oh, no, that wasn't the cane land, sorry.
No, so the cane land is the land that you authorized, um, I got, it's probably been two and a half, three years ago now, down in Gleeson Dale. Next to the, um.
Oh, the one that we, that isn't what we're putting the park on, the other piece of park.
Correct, so this is the property that the intention is to have some trails through it, um, the trails are being built by volunteers, so there's no cost. This thirty-five thousand, is that what it is, thirty-five thousand, um, is to build access from the road to the property, so there's a. They have to deal with some culvert work, um, they have to deal with access, um, where there's no sidewalk area, um, so this is to engineer and develop. That, the access to the property, so that folks down in Gleeson Dale can then enjoy some trails.
Great.
Um, and then the, the comprehensive plan consultant, it really, that's how much it's gonna cost.
That's what was requested.
That's the estimate, I mean, we won't know until people respond.
Yes.
And do we do it, we do an audit every year, right?
Yes.
And, and I noticed the rates jumped up, do we, do we put it out to bid every?
So we do, um, and the reason it jumped up is because we had um a larger amount in there that we've whittled away over the years, so we, we were able to. Put less in the article, because we were using the reserve that's been in there, and now we're down, so, um, the cost of the annual audit. And we have to do an OPEB um actuarial that comes out of the same line, is about the twenty-five thousand, so this will cover um the audit. This is our, we have one more year, I think, it's this year and then next year, um, for the um contract that we're under.
A three-year contract, that's what I thought.
Yes, and we did actually change, um, we changed firms last year, I'm trying to think of where we are, um. Because the, the rates came in so much lower with the, um, another company.
Well, they have been going, there's fewer auditors out there now, so the rates are all going up.
Yes, they are going up, but we, uh, we are locked in for another, I think it's this year, it's fiscal twenty-four and fiscal twenty-five, we are locked in.
Hector.
Um, I'm gonna apologize ahead of time because I'm so new to this, and my head is spinning.
It's a lot.
I feel like I'm gonna ask a really basic question that I didn't understand, second column is twenty twenty-three annual town meeting fiscal year. Twenty twenty-four budget requested, and the fourth column is town administrator recommended, and I didn't understand, what's the difference? Why is there difference between the two?
Because the requested is what the departments are asking for, versus what I'm recommending that we fund.
So, I see that a lot of what you just explained covers many of the differences that I see in this. Why didn't they request those same changes that you're recommending?
So it depends in, in every situation, um, so some of it is, we've finalized union contracts after the requests came in. Um, some of this came out when I met with departments and we talked about really what they need, um, there was a stigma here. Previously of folks not asking for resources that they need to fund their department, um, or over-asking because they were afraid that they wouldn't get something if. So it's just a matter of me working with departments, um, to really figure out what their needs are, um. For instance, like elections, we lowered because there was not, there's not as many elections, so they had plugged a number when we were going through it, and then when we met. They realized we don't have an extra election, so we were able to lower that through my recommendation.
But overall, there's a seven hundred thousand dollar difference between what was requested and what is being recommended.
Yeah, ninety percent of that is the school, and that's what I just mentioned with Nishoba, so Nishoba's request was level-funded technically. Because they missed the deadline when our software needed the request by, and then, so that's why my recommendation, I'm not recommending. But that really, so that makes up, um.
Yeah, because that's just dry, five hundred thousand.
Yeah, so that's five hundred thousand of what makes up that difference, is all the Nishoba assessment.
And then I noticed that there's moderators' expenses and selectmen's expenses, which I'm, I'm sure that's gonna be changed to select board. And there's some expenses and some wages, what are those?
So the ex.
So the wages are salaries, and the expenses are non-salaried items.
And then wages are usually, the second line of the, of a department's usually the staff, not the director.
Right, so the department head normally has their own line item, which is the first budgetary line, and then any ancillary staff, um, clerical, assistant. Department heads, those all make up the um wages line, everything's sort of lumped together under that.
It's not one person, it's, so that would be, there are two.
Some there, I mean.
For, for ours, for example, like, it's not, we're obviously not getting paid, but it's.
Yes, the moderator I, uh, am recommending, um, even though he didn't, he didn't request it, but he supported it. Um, yes, because no one has taken whopping forty-five dollars, um, and with the new moderator, he likes to actually participate in the regional meetings. And so this will give him some flexibility to attend some meetings.
Okay.
By putting the money in expense line and increasing it minimally, even though it looks like four hundred and forty-three percent, but, you know.
And there was something about, um, so, you said with the IT budget increases, that was because we're going to. What was it again?
We're not going to anything, we've been funding money through ARPA and the CARES Act, and now we need to move those into our budget. Because we have, we need to keep up that.
Which is also, that's the same situation with the procurement position, we have to pay for that, we've been paying for it with ARPA funds. But now we actually are on the hook for that.
Yes, so now we're incorporating that, and, and as I mentioned, next year there'll be another round, I mean, some of our, um, we've talked about the. Um, public relations, uh, we pay for, um, uh, an archive service that archives all of our social media accounts. To comply with public records, those are all being funded still through ARPA, they're minimal, but next year we'll have to work those into our budget. I didn't wanna move everything at once, and we didn't wanna keep draining ARPA, so it was a strategic way to start incorporating those expenses into our budget.
I did see one weird thing, it's, it's a small amount of money, so it doesn't, but town administrator office wages, as opposed to selectmen's office wages?
So that's where I put procurement.
No, but she's on there, I mean.
I gotta, I'm sorry, I gotta look.
She's got sixty-two five, and then it's forty-five hundred from three thousand.
That's the additional increases you gave me for the car allowance and the cell phone.
And the townwide expenses, the group insurance?
That's health insurance.
And there was, yeah, one point zero five million requested, but you're recommending one point two million.
Again, it's. I'm the only one that requests, there is no one that requests that, um, so it was when, when the time came for me to put an amount in there. Um, I was playing around with one number, and then we got, um.
Got the actual quotes.
We got the actual quotes and started to look at, um, we've heard from some employees that might um sign up for health insurance, so. Uh, we always have to account for a couple of extra employees to join, um, but thirteen point seven five, thirteen point seven five percent. Is just the increase on our rates of that increase.
Which is about what most companies have been going through as well.
Or you start dropping what you offer.
Yes, and as I think I mentioned at the financial um forecast, we are looking at comparable plans this summer, um. The two largest, um, that are the most comparable would be the Maya Trust and the GIC, the Group Insurance Commission. Um, the group that we are in currently is Minuteman Nishoba, and, um, quite frankly, the increase is, in my opinion. This is my opinion, um, is because they have not managed the trust well, um, and they are underfunded, and so now they have to increase every single plan. The same amount to make up for that, um, and so I think, I think you'll see a number of communities start to look at other options. Um, and quite frankly, the more that leave the trust, the more liability the remaining communities have to take, so. But we will be going up to bid and looking and comparing rates and seeing. But we will be going up to bid and looking and comparing rates and seeing what's out there.
Okay.
Great.
I think we'd have to have a decision by, I think it's November first, so that'll give us, once we get through town meeting, we'll start comparing those and, and see what makes the most sense for us. And then we would have to meet with, um, an employee, um, committee that's made up of a representative from each union, a representative from the personnel group. Um, and a representative from the retirees if we wanted to negotiate a change of health insurance.
Yep.
Believe it or not, that's all I have.
All right.
Green advisory funding?
Yes.
What are they spending on?
So that is, um, that is to develop their climate action plan. So they are working on their climate action plan. Um, a large portion of the funding that they're requesting is to, um, hire a graphic designer to actually format the plan. Um, and print the plan. Um, and we've talked about lowering the numbers of actual documents that they plan to produce. But they're going to do some outreach, they're gonna do some advertising. Um, they are looking to set up some, um, communication at like Spring Fest and do things like that, so they'll be looking for materials. Uh, I will say the budget that they provided me in the request is almost down to the penny with how they plan to spend that money.
They had fifteen thousand last year.
They did, and they still have some of that, um, and they are working through that as going up to town meeting and then they'll, they'll plan to use, it's fourteen and change, right? Fourteen, four.
Yeah, fourteen, four, right, okay. Okay.
All right.
So we're not taking a vote on it.
Um, what, and now we can go to the warrant. We, one thing I do wanna say is, my hope is that the next meeting. That we have a full complement of the board and that we can discuss, um. If any positions that we want to take on it. I don't wanna do that tonight. Um, because I don't feel like that's fair to the other two people. I really wanna make sure. So what I would like to do is basically just, if anybody has any questions about warrant articles. Um, really it's more the special warrant articles, I guess, because really we've gone through the budget parts of it. Um, we've done the charter changes, I think.
Can I give a summary?
Please do.
Thanks, Denise. I just, I, this is a lot tonight and I'm just like, I don't know.
It is, so. So it looks like a lot, um, we do have sixty, sixty-seven articles, I think.
Sixty-eight.
Yes, so sixty-nine, the election is the last one, so sixty-eight articles. Um, however, you know, so our first two are the standard sort of town meeting business. Um, Article three is the change in wage and classification schedule, which, um, minor changes if any. Um, you'll see as compared to last year, we've continued to, continue to find ways to make things more equitable. Um, and so we have, one of the changes with the fire union is, um, under Schedule B of the salary schedule. Is to take all of their stipend positions and put them in the personnel bylaw versus in their union contract. Which would allow call members of their department to receive these stipend positions versus if it was in the union, it would only be four, potentially six eligible employees. Um, so that opens it up to more folks in the department that can participate. Um, additionally, we have expanded what was last year our sort of seasonal, um, rate schedule to include all hourly employees. So that there is a mechanism for step increases for folks like our substitute van drivers for the Council on Aging. Um, our, um, firefighters, our EMTs that are on call, the part-time dispatchers. They have been at rate, excuse me, and then they just get a cost of living and there's no incentive for them to stay and, and move through the grades. So we looked at all of our positions and figured out where we can, um, combine them and what makes the most sense, so. Uh, so this should actually help us with retaining some of these part-time staff or, um, on-call staff that have some incentive to actually stay. And, and get a little bit of an increase every year. Um, Article four is the budget, which we obviously, um, just briefly went through. But then Articles five through thirty-six are our standard consent calendar articles. Um, there's nothing crazy in here, um, you know, minor changes that might have been, um.
Sorry, what's a consent calendar?
So that's all approved in one vote at town meeting. So because they're sort of these standard articles that we vote every year, they do not need the same kind of discussion as the other articles, so.
People on the floor will call out a number if you want to discuss it, so it's.
Oh, that's what, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't often get passed without someone having a question about one.
It's, that's more the budget. Um, the consent calendar, you'll see, and, and when you get a chance, Hector, in the back of the, um, warrant. Are some guidelines about the consent calendar, um, and it will tell you, so appendix, I think it's.
Amy.
Consent calendar procedures, so it's after the town election. And it is, it is the, so the motion for that will be Articles six through thirty-six as printed in the warrant without debate on such articles. So that takes those in one vote because they're procedural, um, you know, there's nothing controversial. There's nothing new that's been introduced this year, um, but as I said, there may be some minor variations, um. You know, like, um, for instance, the weights and measures that we pay the state to do has been a thousand dollars. And now the state's increasing us to thirty-five hundred dollars. We kept that under the consent calendar because we have no choice, we have to pay the state. It's a minimal increase, it's non-controversial. So there may be some minor increases or changes to dollar amounts, but not by much. If there was anything large, it would have been bumped to the regular articles.
Okay.
But that will take care of, in, in essence, once we get through that, the first thirty-six articles. Um, thirty-seven and thirty-eight, I'm proposing it a little bit differently this year, so this is our capital request. Uh, and because of the number of capital requests, I am requesting it in two separate articles. Um, the first Article thirty-seven is what we can comfortably, in my opinion, pay cash for out of our free cash. And that's at the amount of five hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Um, the second request is to borrow for these three items. And I just wanna be clear that when I recommend borrowing for this, it's within side our tax levy. This is not asking the taxpayers for additional money. This is something that we will absorb within our regular budget. Um, and, and there's a couple of reasons that I'm proposing that. Um, you'll see with the three items that I'm recommending for borrowing, two of them are vehicles, uh, one being an ambulance, one being a dump truck. Um, as we've talked about repeatedly, uh, the wait time for vehicles right now is up to two years, sometimes more. We already have earmarked a significant amount of cash for vehicles that we still may not see for another year. Um, I would rather authorize, authorize these for borrowing that, you know, something could change in the next year. We may have an influx in cash and wanna pay for them. It may be two years. At that point, we would borrow them for, you know, maybe five years and just pay them off.
Does that include the bucket truck that we still have?
The bucket truck we're still waiting on from two years ago, so that money is still held up in our budget. Um, and, um, this just gives us some flexibility as far as the vehicles are concerned. And then with the, the facilities, the town building, water system repair upgrade, that is for this building and the loop that covers this building, the town hall. The former fire station, the library, private residence and the church. Um, we will be having some conversations with the private residents in the church because we are running out of capacity in our well. So we have to upgrade the infrastructure, uh, because the water mains are failing as well. Um, but by putting this on as a borrowing, we, I actually don't think it's gonna cost us seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So I would rather not hold that cash aside.
Right.
Um, this would allow us to borrow only what's actually needed to repair the system and make the necessary upgrades. Um, but so that way, we're not, again, we're not setting aside that money and waiting to see what happens. Um, so that gives us a little flexibility. Uh, capital planning is meeting tomorrow night. They have seen the recommendations that I'm making, that I am making. Um, they will be hopefully making some recommendations on them tomorrow. Um, from there, we only have one, um, community preservation article this year for a request of funding, and that's Article thirty-nine. And that is the neighborhood park in Gleesendale, separate from the Cane Lands. Small parcel to be, uh, made into a small neighborhood park, um, with a couple of parking spaces and some benches. And some ability for folks to just sit and enjoy some green space down there. Um, the next is a minor change from the Board of Assessors that would allow, um, you can see that it would allow, um, someone to. Participa, uh, let me just make sure I. Yes, so, um, in order to qualify for exemptions, it has to be, the property cannot be in a trust. So this would allow if you are a veteran and the property is in a trust, that you can apply for that exemption. Um, we don't have many, but it would allow that flexibility should we have anyone apply for that. Um, Article forty-one, the Nishoba Regional Agreement, so this is looking to change the regional agreement. Um, as we all know, it's been vetted over the last, I don't know, year and a half.
Oh, no, longer.
Um, so this is the draft, this is the draft they're putting forward, um.
So we're.
What is it?
It's interesting, it's not in, I mean, obviously it's a huge document, sort of like the zoning thing, but we don't even have this cover sheet, the summary sheet in here? No, they have the short.
So it will be on our website under the town meeting, um, page. Uh, I actually think I may have already put it up. Um, so that folks can read it and it is on file with the town clerk's office or will be on file with the town clerk's office. But this is the article language that was submitted by, um, and accepted by the three towns, so we all had the same language appearing in our warrant.
This doesn't require two-thirds, it's just majority?
Um, our next few articles are standard articles that potentially and eventually could go into the consent calendar, we just haven't moved them. Um, the first one is to put money into our rainy day fund, our stabilization fund. Um, so I'm looking to move two hundred thousand of free cash, um, into the stabilization account. Um, the one after that is to put seventy-five thousand into our capital stabilization account to start building that account up for us. Following that is the legal services line.
And we not had legal services and consent calendar?
No, I think I was told when I came here because it's always been contentious and some people question the amount, so. Uh, again, it's something we have to fund, so. So those three could easily move into the consent calendar and maybe it's something we'll look at going forward. Um, the next article is another PFAS article, um. We are still looking for opportunities as, um, Representative Hogan mentioned, PFAS funding from the state. But we, we know we will need money for next fiscal year, so I'm putting that in. Again, it's a borrowing article, so if we need the money, we will borrow it. Um, if it's something we can get through grant funding or other mechanisms, we will use that instead. Um, if you'll recall, again, last year you, um, allocated five hundred thousand of our ARPA funds to PFAS. We are almost halfway through that, um, and so this will get us through, especially with the EPA looking to drop the threshold from. Um, seventy, the state is at twenty, down to four. They are looking to drop the threshold of PFAS for four. Which means we then have to remediate all the households under twenty that we have not been remediating, so, um. It, it is crazy and, and there has to be, at, at some point, there has to be some method for whether it's the state or the federal government to provide resources for. Uh, communities.
They haven't shut them down yet. They're still making PFAS, right?
They are still making PFAS.
Right, right, yeah.
Yes, um, there is an opportunity and I've talked to council, I participated in, which we may have touched upon briefly, I don't know. Um, I attended a webinar, um, to see if we wanted to join the sort of PFAS class action lawsuit. Um, and because we're in a unique, unique situation that we are primarily private wells, we would have to join on behalf of the town. To be honest, there was sort of a lot of work going into it and then it's based on the population. I mean, the money we would get back is minimal. Um, I will continue to investigate if there is a benefit to that, but, um, now, if the EPA's threshold goes forward. Which we would not know until the end of the calendar year likely, um, I, I, I would think almost every city and town in this country is gonna have a PFAS situation. That is all gonna be looking for the same bucket of money to try and get funds. Uh, we are clearly ahead of the curve because we've been working on it now for three years. Um, but, you know, as the superintendent mentioned, I mean, costs are just escalating with everything. Costs are escalating with remediating PFAS, so, so this money is, we're asking town meeting to appropriate. If we don't need the money, we will not borrow it. Uh, again, this is within our tax levy, this is no additional cost to the taxpayer.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Anytime you are, is there anytime in the warrant where you're asking to borrow money that it touches the tax?
No, in order to do that, it would require a ballot question, so we, there's nothing in this warrant that would, um, trigger a debt exclusion ballot, a debt exclusion ballot question of the taxpayer. The, uh, next few articles are somewhat standard, um, our MS floor requirements, so again, those are EPA requirements that we now need to follow. We have a, um, stormwater action plan that we need to implement and it addresses things like street sweeping. Um, materials, you can't just dispose of that anymore. Um, asphalt, you know, reclaimed asphalt, you can't just dispose of it anymore because there's other contaminants in there. So this is just the next year of funding those, um, requirements of the EPA. The cemetery through highway is requesting a couple of articles. Uh, the first one is, um, to replace the lawnmower. Um, they need a better lawnmower for the cemetery. Uh, the one after that is, is a shed to store some of their, uh, materials at the, um, Brookside Cemetery. Um.
Is this, sorry, I'm just gonna ask all the questions, but is this because they are moving their equipment out of the old? Okay.
No, they, they really needed one anyways. They have fully moved, so they have fully vacated the former fire station and are at the highway department. But, um, this will eliminate trips back and forth.
There was a shed up there. Is it not, not using the shed that's up there anymore?
No, this will allow them to store other things, like some materials and things that shouldn't be out in the open. Um, so this is.
Like flamables and stuff like that.
Yes.
But the shed that's up there isn't big enough?
I don't know. I, I honestly don't know.
He's been asking for this for years.
But this came from the highway department. So I can ask that, but this came through the highway department, not, some, um. The next one is some funding for survey work to, um, look at the cemetery, plan out the remainder of it. Um, they wanna look at some, um, planting some trees, looking at the roads. This would allow them to actually plot out the rest of it, um, for when the time comes. We've touched upon the Cane Land path construction and the comprehensive plan request. The Historical Commission is looking for some funds because they've decided that they need some assistance trying to get the West School on the National Historic Register. Um, so this would be some funding to, um, hire a consultant, um, to help them through that process.
That's great, it's just, it's terrible location.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I guess you can't choose where history is, so.
Nope, um, green advisory, we touched upon that. Um, Article fifty-four is similar to one we did last year. We have some, when you borrow money and do not expend it, you, um, have to repurpose it. Um, and so we are repurposing some old town building HVAC funds to the library renovation project. Um, I will tell you, I will not publicly announce the number yet, but we got those costs today, so. Um, after the building committee meeting tomorrow and they, they find out what the escalation cost is, I'll be happy to sit with them all with you, but. Have to find every cent that we can find. Um, the next one is debt rescission, same thing, when you authorize debt but don't ever issue it or don't need it, you have to legally rescind it through town meeting. So we appropriated fif, uh, one point five million dollars for stow acres, but we ended up receiving the grants, um, so we don't need that borrowing.
That's great.
The next few articles, fifty-six, fifty-seven, fifty-eight, fifty-nine and sixty, all have to do with the, um, charter changes. That the Charter Change Committee has been working on. Um, so they will have, um, they've selected a, a small number of articles, uh, ones that I believe they feel will be the least controversial. Uh, to put forward now and they're working on a larger submission for the fall.
Now, do they have a, an information session set up yet or anything, do you know?
Um, so they had one, I don't know what they have scheduled, to be honest with you. Um, I haven't sort of followed where they are in their process. Um, should these pass town meeting, they still do not take effect, these would have to go on a ballot. So the way charter changes work are, um, it would be the next annual election, so that's why they plan to have some changes now. Some changes in the fall and then they would appear on next May, May of twenty twenty-four's ballot. That's when they would need to pass in order to take effect, so, um, this is just the first step in that process. Um, Article sixty-one, I think we've talked about some of it. Uh, this is the Green Advisory Committee looking to adopt the Specialized Energy Code. Um, this would change, um, to take on the, um, most recent energy code that the state has put out. Um, and you can see it helps to achieve the admission levels that the state is, um, setting. Um, to reach by twenty fifty, so it, it does make some requirements. Uh, if, if this is passed, it would take effect January first of twenty twenty-four, so there's time to work through that process and educate. Excuse me, folks in town.
Okay.
Um, Article sixty-two, um, as you know, we have been working on the Box Mill Bridge. Um, article sixty-two, um as you know, we have been working on the box mill bridge replacement for a while now. Um, we are working with Mast dot on that project, it does require some temporary and permanent easements. Um, back in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, I forget which. Um, the board authorized the project to move forward, um with the understanding that there would be a time to come back for. An easement um authorization, so we don't have a dollar amount yet, the appraisers are out there working on, there's only two properties that this involves. Some have, um, so they both have temporary and permanent easements, they will, it's actually quite remarkable. They plan to bring in an entirely temporary bridge um while they replace the existing structure, so.
Is it during apple picking season?
Uh, yeah, that would be.
That would be terrible.
Well, it'll still function as a perfectly fine bridge.
Well, they did that over the Sudbury when they, when that bridge collapsed.
Yeah, so this will, um the motion for this article, when we have the amounts, will authorize the actual amounts of the easements, but this is the. Language to authorize the easements itself. Um, the next group of articles, article sixty-three, sixty-four, sixty-five. Sixty. Six are the zoning articles from the planning board. Um, so those, obviously, we talked about this evening, we talked about the last meeting, um the lower village business district and the ones that were discussed this evening.
And then the last two are from citizens?
Yes, article sixty-seven is the citizens petition to allow drive-through establishments in the business district. And article sixty-eight is to exclude a residential property from the business district. Um, those are both citizen, well, the sixty-eight is not technically a citizens petition, but a homeowner may make their own zoning request, so. The homeowner is petitioning town meeting to make the zoning change on their behalf. Um, so those are the final two, not counting the election article.
Okay.
Happy to answer questions or um give any more information at this point that you may need.
Did we get any clarification between the drive-through citizens petition and the lower village business district? One pass, if both pass, what happens is, if there's a conflict or?
Well, so I was not getting information on that, that's the, these are the planning board articles and so.
Right.
So they didn't tell us anything, okay.
No, I think the assumption is still, um if the lower village zoning article passes. The citizens petition would be irrelevant in lower village because that would no longer be the true business district.
Would not be relevant.
Correct, it would be relevant elsewhere in town that is the business district, but not in lower village, if they both passed.
If it fails there, I, they could pull it, they could pull the article?
Which, who's they?
Sorry, the citizens petition could pull the article?
They could table it.
I mean, table it if they, if they didn't do it, um.
Okay.
So if they both pass. The citizens petition would only be applicable in the remainder of town under the business district. Um, and then if one were to pass, then it would be whatever relevant article passed.
Okay.
Um, so in the context of that we might be voting on things next meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Should we, or were you thinking about um the P, sorry, not PFAS money, the um ARPA money?
Yes.
Um, I know you've been thinking about how to use that balance, is that something we would talk about in the, because I guess my only question is like if. If I wanted to argue like some of these things shouldn't go through town meeting, maybe we should use ARPA money, so. I I don't know what, I mean, maybe, I guess it's just to incorporate that, not to make any decisions on the ARPA money, but to incorporate that as part of our discussion. Would be helpful for me, just so I understand why, you know, more about why not using ARPA makes sense and putting it on the town meeting warrant makes sense.
I mean, I'm happy to talk about that now if you want.
Um, only if, I mean, I think it's only if we decide there were some of those things we'd actually want to vote on, we don't tend to, I mean, the select board doesn't always. Take votes on every financial.
Yeah, I mean, I can just tell you are on, you know, um, right now, it's based on the previous conversations that we have so many projects. Swirling around in ARPA, that if we run out of money due to escalation, we have no way to cover those and those projects would sort of come in a standstill. Um, so for the majority, I mean, there are a few other projects that I am supporting through there, um which I talked about at capital. Um, we have to replace the well at Pine Bluff, that was originally a capital request, but we need to get it in before the summer programs start, so. Couldn't really wait till town meeting, so we're putting that through, um, actually think that's the only one that's come up since we've talked about it.
Yeah.
But it would still leave some funding that if we.
No, that totally makes sense.
If we need to finalize all of these projects that have been, I mean, even like, um. Some of the, we just got the defibrillators, but you know, I haven't gotten that invoiced yet, all of those, everything, everything, I think that we've appropriated through ARPA has come back. Higher than what we expected, so, um.
It's just good to have that question.
Yeah, so it would, it would save that, i- if, quite frankly, if we still had, you know, two million, this would be another conversation, but.
Right.
We were down to a couple hundred thousand.
Right.
Um, i- in my opinion, it didn't really make sense to um cover some of these. It's it's all our, it's all cash from us, so whether it's through uh free cash, through ARPA funds or through our own um tax levy.
Right.
We have to pay for them all somehow, so it's just another bucket that we have to choose from.
Okay, okay. All right.
Does the.
Any other questions?
I think this is gonna be a totally off-the-wall question, but kind of goes to correspondence, the whole uh Lake Boone Dam. Hasn't, nothing about it is coming up in the annual town meeting?
Not in the annual town meeting, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
So, cause that money came from where? The state?
So we have the million dollars from the state, we appropriated funding last year and. Until we have final designs, we're not going to know what the cost is, so um there's a potential to need funding in the fall. Um, and there's a potential it may not be until next spring, so there's nothing at this point.
We have an additional town meeting to discuss.
We have, we have the fall one already, so it would either be the fall or next spring.
Okay.
All right.
So were you thinking that we would, your, the next meeting, we would talk about articles?
That we wanna, that we wanna support or or not support.
Take any position on, yes.
So on the twenty-fifth, the twenty-fifth, you will make any recommendations you choose and vote on the final warrant. By then, we will have um legal, so the only thing I expect to change um is we're waiting on town council's. Uh, language changes, which I do expect, given the number of articles, I do expect there to be a lot of tweaking from town council.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It won't change the substance of anything, um but I do expect um changes to come from them. So I I am not expecting to have those until I believe Friday the twentieth, no, twenty first, maybe. Um, and so you will have the rev- the final version, uh we will have the final version available online for folks. Um, the the date on the twenty-sixth, so you will vote everything the twenty-fifth. The final version will go to press the next morning, has to be printed and it will be on our website on the twenty-sixth. And that will cooperate, I'm sorry.
Is it going out through?
It will go in the paper the following week, the first week in May.
Um, can I ask a question just for um? To keep, not to keep it short, but um is it possible to have the board members kind of? It, so we could do a straw poll, not to me, um to you about what articles we're thinking about doing, would that work?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just submit it.
So if you guys, would you mind just sending an email to all of us? Um, that way we can be more efficient in the meeting, so that we're not going through every single one. If it's, if I find ones that people actually want to talk about, then I think that that's the best way to do it. Um, yeah, so we'll go ahead and do that. No, I'm all about efficiency. Um, great, if there is no other questions, why don't we move on to minutes? Oh, the minutes, thank you so much, Joyce.
Yeah.
These are great.
I feel like, why bother reading them?
Like, sorry, we left.
Sorry, I have one other question about the warrant, a lot of people have asked me if this, what's the deadline if they want to make changes? To the warrant?
Who?
It's private citizens, if they.
It was when they submitted it.
Well, they come to town meeting.
On the floor.
So if they come to town meeting and they want to propose an am-
Amendment.
An amendment, what's that process?
There's a piece of paper.
So amendments have to be in writing, there's a form at town meeting or they can bring it with them if they know they plan to make an amendment.
So it doesn't have to be submitted before town meeting, they can submit it right there.
There have, they can, the moderator will take it and review it ahead of time, but it still has to be made on town meeting floor.
Okay.
Um, and then it's up to the moderator to determine what scope, what's within the scope of the article and what's outside.
So it's, it's not a bad idea to talk to the moderator, if they know they want to amend something.
Yeah.
To to reach out to Jim and say, this is what I'm thinking.
Yes, and he's still moderator at sto-me.gov.
I just had a few people at meeting house ask me about some of these amendments and they wanted to propose amendments, so. So I thought I'd find out, thanks.
Yes.
I think also in the moderator's page, I think on on the website, it sort of explains, it has a town meeting handbook.
Yeah.
That's the one place I didn't look.
Yes, and we just revised that, so there is an updated handbook.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And they couldn't find it, okay.
But yes, if someone knows they want to make, I would recommend they speak to Jim.
Okay.
Um, and then depending on what it is, he would either advise them or he would um let them know that he would accept it or not.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it does have to be in writing, even if it's that day, they'd have to fill out a form.
Right.
Uh-huh. Um, all right. Uh, does anyone have anything they wanted to say?
On the minutes?
Uh, the minutes are perfect. Let's take a question.
Yep.
Worked to accept the meeting minutes of the March twenty eighth, twenty-three meeting.
Second.
Um, all in favor? Aye. And that's unanimous. All right, um, any comments or questions about correspondence?
So I just have to, I want to just, Nancy McPherson.
Oh, I know.
I mean, I, she has earned the right to sell her restaurant, it's gonna be really sad and I'm excited that at least that someone's taking it over. And and I want to know when they're opening.
I know.
Yes, I don't think we know that.
I think the summer, I think they told us they're hoping for the summer. You will see them soon because they're gonna start going through the permitting process, they have to transfer the liquor license.
Right, right, well, that's fun, so, but so I just, you publicly thank Nancy for many years of an amazing restaurant. And brought farm to table to Stowe way before the rest of the world says. Um, and Linda.
And Linda.
Was one of the co-founders back then, so.
And she told me she's not going anywhere, so we'll all still see her, just not at the restaurant.
Bill hasn't, I mean, Bill, uh, Don, Don hasn't sold the restaurant, the airport yet, so hopefully he won't, because they got projects up there, so anyway.
Um, any other, any other anythings?
I mean, the whole thing with um the dam, I just feel, you know, it's a long process.
Yeah.
They're not gonna, we can't give them all the answers because we don't have the answers, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate their frustration, especially for the people who live down there, but we're not holding back.
Thank you. Yes, um, all right.
All right.
Anything else going, going?
I guess the only.
I'll take the last motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Um, all in favor? Aye. And that's it.
It's pretty good, only nine twenty considering, we got a lot done.